I hate that thing. Okay, all right, so say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A nation under God.
All right. So, question number one, do we have anyone here to provide public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move the rest of that time to the end of the meeting. We do have one quick and sad announcement. Jane Finnamore, who was a longtime PE teacher at Hampton Academy, she was the co-leader of the sixth and eighth grade environmental camp, and lots of folks knew her and remembered her fondly, did pass away this week. I don't remember. She has-
Your mics, Donna.
The head of the time, man. Lots of people do that now, but... That's fantastic. Well, for our condolences to her family and friends. Let's see, okay. Are we ready to get started? Board committee assignments, does anyone have any updates? Mrs. Bridle, how's the budget committee doing?
The budget committee is excited to review the town budget, which stayed afloat, stayed even for next year, and the school budget, which went up 3.1%, so both budgets are gonna get started reviewing tomorrow night.
Anybody else have anything?
I will give a quick update on negotiations. We met today, earlier this afternoon. And I would say we've made a lot of progress. And we have one more bargaining session next Tuesday at 12:30, I think it is. And I would anticipate that we would be finishing... Yeah.
That's great.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you.
Do we want to do a CESP update while we're at it? Jenny, would you like to do a CESP update? Negotiations?
Negotiations is going very well. Very well, very amicable, very nice. Hopefully, we'll be settled, we're meeting tomorrow, and hopefully, we'll be settled tomorrow.
That's great, Nick.
For the buildings and facilities, we did finish interviewing candidates for the facilities manager position, and we do have a candidate that we agreed on, and I think Dr. Costa is following up on that.
Yes.
In curriculum, we continue to look at the strengths and weaknesses, as we did at the last meeting, when we looked at the data from all the testing, we continue to look at the strengths and weaknesses of, from that data, and also looking at those three pilot programs in math that they're testing, and hopefully, we'll get information on that when it's done.
So, a couple of PTA and Hampton Rec announcements. For Hampton Rec, just a reminder to everybody, the annual tree lighting is going to be on Friday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it has moved. This year, the event is going to be at Founder's Park, which is very exciting. We're hoping that will be a little bit more of a family-friendly venue. They're gonna have lots of events at that. The Historical Society Barn is gonna have festivities, letter writing to Santa, live entertainment from the Granite State Bell Ringer, so that should be a really fun night. Also, if you are interested in having your kids participate in the winter K-2 sports, which is always, always a big, a big sign up, please remember to put that on your phone for December 4th at 9:00 a.m. That event, that program always fills up fast. And I always hear from moms who are sad because they didn't get to sign up sometimes. Also, for the PTA, we did meet tonight, and they're, one of their big things that is coming up is they do provide snacks for all three of the schools for parent-teacher conference night. So, there will be a signup genius coming out, I believe, in the next week for that, to bring in water, snacks, things like that, and then that'll be delivered to each of the schools. So, keep an eye out for that. It, for announcements? Correct.
If you're not a parent and you're just a member of the community and want to come out to eat, Big Bad Wolf has great food, and Clyde's Cupcakes, you can always find something.
Yeah.
So, that's on November 21st and 22nd.
I believe 21st is when they're gonna have the food trucks.
21st, okay.
Okay, so, we good? All right. Mr. Robitaille, ready?
Good evening, everyone. First, wanted to just, we were able to finally have our ribbon cutting for the preschool playground tonight. So, we were small and mighty but numbers, but it was very windy, but we were able to officially open and recognize all that went into that and all who contributed. So, again, to the board, thank you as well. We really appreciate it. Our preschool students are loving it. They love to watch the progress of the construction projects, guess kind of what equipment was coming in. So, it was a cool experience for them. And then, I just also wanted to note, too, it's been a great addition for our NEC program. Some of those students don't always get the chance to spend as much time outside, but they have a safe place to explore, navigate recess equipment. So, we're very thankful for that addition at Center School. So, I just wanted to start off with, again, one more heartfelt appreciation. Couple of things going on around Center School. On October 24th, we had an all-school meeting, and that was around the One Anti-Bullying presentation. So, our IA team and school guidance counselor put on a great presentation to the Book One. And it really leads the K-2 students with a message of kindness and how that can spread, and how if we have positive behaviors, you know, we can, we can put, we can, you know, put negative behaviors to the side. A small act of kindness can go a long way. So, that was, that was a nice presentation at Center School. We also revisited Zones of Regulation. That's a good thing to revisit at the beginning of the school year. You know, for folks at home that don't know what the zones are, we do recognize that students have a, you know, all types of feelings throughout the school day. And we recognize that all feelings are valid, but we try to work our best and find ways to regulate and get back to the green zone so that we have productive school days. So, that was a great presentation led by our occupational therapist, Christine Connor, and again, our guidance counselor, Sam Conno. Annual Halloween Parade was on Halloween. It was great for me to experience. I had a great time. So, we did a couple laps around the building. It was almost 80 degrees. So, after those two laps, we got the kids back inside. As some were in some pretty heavy costumes, but a lot of happy faces. It was a great turnout from the community. So, awesome to see, you know, parents and community members supporting us over at Center. Just a reminder, our annual food drive is kicking off on Monday of next week. So, that's a really big piece of Center School. We do a sharing and gathering presentation the day before Thanksgiving break. So, we're looking forward to being able to give back to the community as well. And then, just a reminder that our parent-teacher conferences are coming up on, again, the 21st and the 25th. Classroom teachers, at this point, most likely have reached out to families to get signups taken care of. So, obviously, reach out to the school if you have any questions or concerns about parent-teacher conferences. And I believe that's the bulk of my report. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If I don't see you, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Sadler.
Hello, everyone. Just a couple of updates, some great things that have been happening. Very similar, back in the end of October, we had our Celebration of Kindness. It used to formally be called the Ovea's Bully Prevention Kickoff Assembly. We talk about, you know, what bullying is, the four rules, and then flip it into a really great pro-social event. We also had a wonderful Veterans Day assembly, if anyone heard about it at all, on Friday. It was probably one of our biggest turnouts. We had close to 50 veterans in attendance. It's gonna be on Channel 8, I believe, is Hampton Channel. It's also on YouTube and on our website. There was an unbelievable musical treat that we posted on Facebook between one of our veterans and Mr. Carlson and a couple of students. It was a great time. We do have parent-teacher conferences as well on the 21st and 25th, so just a great time to connect with caring adults at home and the school. We have a staff gratitude walk coming up tomorrow, actually. It's part of one of our wellness initiatives out of the District Wellness Committee. And it's just a great time to connect with colleagues and do a few laps around our beautiful walking path and enjoy a fall afternoon. And then, in health classes, Ms. Whitney, Mrs. Cruz, and Officer Sam have been participating in trusted adult lessons, and that's helping students identify trusted adults, you know, both at school and at home, so that if something does happen in their lives or if their feelings a certain way, they know that they have people that they can rely on and have conversations with them. Pretty powerful stuff, but hoping to set kids, you know, on the right path at an early age with, you know, being open and honest with the adults that they interact with. But otherwise, you know, it's November, things are going great, and we're just looking forward to the holidays coming up, and, you know, a wonderful start to December after that. So, I'm open to questions if we have any.
I was just wondering, what, can you just tell me what happened during the Grade 5 electricity workshop?
Yes. So, we had representatives, I'm gonna get it wrong, but it's like the New Hampshire electricity or energy, and they came and did hands-on experiments in the classroom. Lots of talk around solar and solar panels, wind energy, and then some of the basic science stuff, you know, electricity, how it's conducted and things like that. They, they're free of charge, they come to your schools, they, they're wonderful. It was a great opportunity.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Campbell?
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing today? We had a great, great month over at Hampton Academy. Lots of, lots of things going on. On October 25th, we had a beach cleanup with Ms. Bonnie Heath's class. Big thank you to Mr. Chris Grippo, who helped educate us about sustaining and environmental responsibilities. You might have seen that on the Herald in Hampton, which was really nice. We also want to thank you, thanks, the, thanks to the UNH Women's Volleyball Team, who came and read Bully Bean to our sixth-grade class. It was an excellent, excellent way to learn about being an upstander and ways we can stand against bullying. We also had a Veterans Day and Red Ribbon Week celebration. We want to thank, special thanks to all the guests that came out and spoke to us. Ms. NATO in her Sharkbod class released her Fall 2024 The Middle issue. Students wrote excellent articles covering various topics. We look forward to seeing other issues. We do have our Parent-Teacher Night. It's on the 20th and the 21st, 4:00 to 7:00 and 3:00 to 6:00. That will be in combination with our fundraising event, which will be outside in the, in the pickup loop, we will, in the bus loop. All benefits from the food trucks will go to the eighth-grade Washington, D.C. trip. With that said, we want to thank the PTA and Dean Merrill from Experience Hampton for the generous donations. The field trip for the sixth-grade environmental camp came back from October 25th. They created lasting memories. We're excited to bring some of the activities that they learned over an environmental camp back into our advisories and look forward to growing onto that. We had several students of the month from October and November. Congratulations to all of those students. We rolled out final forms. It's a new student-athlete tool that's used widely in New Hampshire. It's a great way for our, us to communicate, keep communication open between the administration, coaches, and staff in a safe way that protects privacy. It also ensures our ability to stay up to date and, and in, in making sure our students have all of the paperwork that they need. On November 18th to the 22nd, we will have a Scholastic Book Fair at Hampton Academy. On Thursday at, on Thursday, this Thursday, at 6:30, the Winnicott High School Auditorium will be doing an intro to Winnicott for the class of 2029. Any incoming freshmen are welcome to join. That's 6:30 at Winnicott High School Auditorium. With that said, I will open it up to questions for you guys.
How are we doing on coaches?
Coaches, we are down one JV varsity, or JV girls' coach.
Okay.
Boys' coach, sorry.
Boys' coach, okay, that's what I was sort of checking.
Yeah, but we are all staffed otherwise, yes.
Okay. Because I heard there was a quite a large turnout for basketball.
We have a large, yeah, we are able to, we have a large basketball turnout, which is really great to see. Several of our students, so we're reaching out to anyone. If anyone is looking to coach, please give us a call. We've, we've reached out to Post-it on at Jobs to see if we can get anything going that there. We've reached out internally to see if anyone wants to, to fill that position. But yeah, we have a full team that we could, we would like to go. Our varsity coach has said he was willing to help out a little bit, but we definitely need a full-time position as we start to get into games.
But the point to parents being that if we cannot find a coach for that, we unfortunately would not be able to run a second team.
Correct.
Just like to add, I used to coach the JV boys, and they're wonderful. And anyone interested in coaching, it's a great opportunity.
It's a great pitch, yep.
Anybody else? I think, I think we're all set.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Dr. De Silva-Napton?
Good evening. Nice to see everybody. You do have my report. And as you know, we all need to go to some professional development, so I went a little outside my lane and went to a PD on artificial intelligence, and it was very enlightening and informative. And they actually did talk a lot about special ed and IEPs and modifications and accommodations, and how we all as school systems really should be embracing this because it's not going away. And there's a lot of discussion about how do we embrace it as a school system? So, we've started those conversations here with Dr. Costa and the leadership team, and exciting things to come. The hatch is moving forward. We're really excited. We've developed two programs this year. We're gonna do the Welcome Baby Bag and our Play Group. That is, those things are getting rolling along, and I'll keep you informed as they come. That's the Hampton Alliance for Thriving Children. And then, as you heard, we did do the beach cleanup, and this is the fifth year that we've done that. So, it's so nice. Our program is called the Experiential Learning Program, just for that reason, so that the students can experience learning situations, and this was definitely one of them. As you can see for the numbers, I know the people at home, of the 933 students, we have 186 of them are identified. That is 19.9% of our students are identified with disabilities in our district. So, that's where we stand. Does anyone have any questions?
With the AI, the opportunity, you had to learn more about AI. I see it notes like use for adjusting or creating content for classrooms, and it mentions IEPs. Was there any discussion about like the privacy issues with AI right now and open platforms?
So, this was more about how do we use it? How do you make prompts? And what is it, kind of what, how can it benefit us? But there is a lot of conversation and issues about that, and policies and regulations, and how do you cite these things? So, there's a lot of work being done in that area, yeah. Just right now, it's all kind of coming out in the open. It's been a couple of years, but you know how things kind of trickle out and get, get to the mainstream? So, we are certainly looking at all of those aspects of it. Thank you.
I think we are all set?
Thank you so much.
Technology, who's, who's going to do technology tonight? All right. Come on down. Nice. Hi, Tim.
Hello, everyone. So, you see my board report there. I don't have too, too much to add on top of that, just going off of what Dr. De Silva-Napton said. We have been looking at the AI stuff as well as a department. Nick has been kind enough to meet with teachers in small groups and sometimes large groups to share some resources with them. We are actively looking into all of the resources as well as just general rules and guidelines, basically looking at the privacy aspects and whether or not students would or should have access to any of those tools down the line, which we would not do until we had policies in place for that. And yeah, other than that, that's where we've been focusing a lot of our time recently. Any questions?
You're getting off easy your first time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Right. And we missed, Mr. Lussard is absent tonight, so Mrs. Borg, come on down.
So, I guess, just a few things I had is participation from the last report I gave you. Still even keel. We, we're serving about 53%. Our free and reduced numbers are same. We're still at 17, holding tight at 17%. And the fun thing we did last month, I think you must have saw it on our Facebook page, we participated in the New Hampshire Great Apple Crunch Day with the state. And I've never seen these kids eat more than one apple and really eat them. So, they had a great time with the apples. We made the, the state brochure, and our participation was noted. Other than that, I don't think any questions? We were about, we were running about 60% last year. So, I don't know if it's a little, 60% approximately. I think, I don't know if it's enrollments down, the cost of living is up. You gotta pick and choose your meals.
Yeah.
Kids are allowed one meal a week, or okay, you could pick two lunches a week. And so, that's kind of a little bit of the feedback I'm getting.
And do we have any plans as the winter gets on and things get tighter? Any plans or any suggestions?
I, I am trying to get out there. I want to do, you know, more hands-on, more taste testing, tastings. I know when I go to the store and I taste something, I end up buying it. So, I want to do more hands-on with the kids.
If, if a person only works, say, they have a seasonal job, can they fill out the paperwork when their season ends?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Please, please fill it out. If your income changes in the, the next month, fill it out. You know? And we always put the numbers through and we see if they get accepted and approved. Okay? Is that it?
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes.
Want to go ahead and do this check? So, we do have a check from the PTA for Center School for $9,428.44.
I'll make a motion to accept that check.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Who accepts the checks that were given to Washington, D.C.? And how do those get accounted for?
We're gonna, I think we're, we're gonna talk about field trip.
Well, I just want to make sure that the public knows that someone receives them and we account for them somehow.
When the administrators from the middle school come up, we will go through that.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a few things to talk about.
Okay.
Great question, though.
Okay, so, Dr. Costa?
Just a big thank you to Facilities for obviously overseeing the playground build at Center School along with Principal Robitaille and Dr. De Silva-Napton. We're, we're excited that we were able to open that today, even though it was a windy day. And I know it was not an ideal, and it gets dark so early. It's still, it's a wonderful thing to add to Center School. So, we're happy to have the preschool playground for not just the school, but for the community to enjoy. And so, big thank yous to Facilities for helping to oversee that, appreciate that. So, a couple of things. We know this is the time of year where, believe it or not, we are about a quarter way through the school year. So, this is the time of the year where children are settling in and we're anxious to meet with parents and families to talk about how students are doing as we are moving on into the year. So, we're excited to welcome our families in for those conferences coming up. Mariah and I continue to be very involved with what's going on at a state level, attending our regional meetings as well as the state meetings to ensure that we are in compliance with some of the changes that have taken place. And I'll talk about some of those. We know that Emily Fixler is working with all of the business areas, agencies, surrounding the upcoming holidays. We are always trying to assist any of our families who need some support. So, pleased to reach out to Emily Fixler. They should have that number. It was in my newsletter last Friday with her contact information. I had the opportunity to join Emily Whitney as well as Cassie Cruz in one of their lessons last week on, specifically around trusted adults. It was just an engaging lesson for our children and seeing our students discuss these scenarios. Officer Sam was there. And just having these conversations about who are the trusted adults in the school, who are the trusted adults at home. It was great to see the children having these meaningful conversations. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the New Hampshire Bar Association's Conference Around School Law. There was lots of conversations specifically related to crisis management, labor laws, free speech, Title IX, harassment and bullying, along with right-to-know. And it was just a good opportunity to hear directly from legal experts and other administrators about these topics that do impact our day-to-day work. So, it was good to be, to do that. This Thursday, the principals and myself will be attending Kim Marshall's conference as part of the collaborative efforts between New Hampshire ASCD and the New Hampshire Association of School Principals, who is the author of Rethinking Teacher Supervision and Evaluation. So, we're excited to be able to do that. I know Nathan serves on the board for the principals. I serve on New Hampshire ASCD board. So, we get, we get two people that get to go, and then we're going to bring a team of principals as we're going to be relooking at our teacher effectiveness plan as it's been about 10 years. So, that'll probably come next year. But we are starting to at least be in the thinking stage about it and thinking about how do we provide feedback to our staff? So, that's in the works. As, as you heard, our negotiations are coming along. We are feeling like these are productive meetings. They help to open those channels of communications to better understand our employees and our staff and what their needs are. So, those conversations have been very productive. We appreciate the opportunity to hear directly from our staff, and we are hopeful that we'll have, we should have those agreements finalized within the next week or so. And with that said, also, I was, we were all pleased to see that the budget has been completed. We're excited to present that to the Budget Committee. We were, I think, as a leadership team, very mindful of the economic times that we live in. I think as a board, we were very responsive to that. And it was great to see that although the budget was up 3%, that was, it was about one and a half percentage points over default. So, when you're below the cost of living allowances, which is about 2, 2, 2 and 1/4%, that's, that, I think, speaks to people around the table being committed to where we are economically and sensitive to our taxpayers and really being responsive. So, I'm looking forward to those conversations coming up. And then, of course, on November 19th, we will hold our next discussion on Anxious Generation with Lane Library. It will be here. Last time, we had over 40-ish people. There are more people that have reached out to me that want to join us. So, we're excited to continue those conversations as we talk about this book. The Safety Drills, as you heard, those continue. And you're going to hear a little bit from Stacy Picard tonight and potentially Patrice Baker, that are going to talk about our parent-partner programs. And I want to talk a little bit about the Cook Center. I'm going to guess they're going to speak about it, but what I would say is that last year, at one of our meetings, somebody brought to our attention the coaching that is going on at Winnicott High School, and that was through the Cook Center. And this summer, when Mariah and I were at the state conference, we actually had an opportunity to not only sit and talk with Sarah Walsh directly, but to also to hear more about what the Cook Center does provide. And actually, we met with Sarah Walsh, the mental health team met with Sarah Walsh, as did the leadership team this past week, and talked about the opportunities for our district. One of the things that the Cook Center does offer, and by the way, they are presenting to, they did present when they were here, to the depart, to the Department of Education in New Hampshire, because we all feel that one of- because we all feel that one of the gaps is how do we help our caregivers with some of the challenges that our children are facing? And as a school, we pride ourselves as being parents in the educational process, but a lot of times, it's our parents that also need the support. One of the advantages of working with the Cook Center is they provide, believe it or not, a coach to every parent who needs one. And they will meet with parents 30 minutes a week on an arranged schedule. It's also, it's a 24/7 confidential assistant. So it's not something that, that the SAU is involved with. It's completely HIPAA protected so that parents, hopefully, if they are having challenges, if, if staff feels like they could use a coach or support, they can access it. This is good for everyone and it's really designed to think about some of the challenges that we are facing and how do we support, how do we support the adults? It's really aimed at supporting adults who are dealing with children that are having these mental health issues, anxiety, depression. Some things like my dog died and I don't know what to say. And this is a support center that will work with a parent on how do you provide grief counseling to your child? What do you say? What do you do? It can be any, any kind of a topic. So this Friday, Dr. De Silva-Napton, myself and Susan Antico are going to start the groundwork on rolling that out. And we will also be sending information out and also looking at what the priorities of this district might be. We're obviously gonna fall back on our school goals, which is related to suicide prevention, mental health, and bullying. So those will be top priorities as those are top priorities in our goals. But we're also gonna be looking at some of those other high-profile, high-topic needs like anxiety and depression. And how do we help families who we know may be struggling with some of these things? So stay tuned for more information on that. But I'm really glad that we're able to move in this direction. I think it's a, it's a great resource, not just for our families, but our entire staff. So doing that. And then, of course, as you said, Andrea, continuing our work with administrative success and looking at those math programs, thinking about what might be a good fit for our district. We're doing that. And I also cited some bills in here which have some trickle-down effect. For example, House Bill 1015, which specifically relates to providing evidence-based instruction in literacy, explicit systematic instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocab and comprehension, will be in effect on September of 2027. I know that, that the Center School staff has really taken a lead on this and many of the staff, if not all of them, have had the letters training, which is specifically geared for this kind of instruction. But this also impacts mathematics, so to be aware of that. And this bill impacts K-5 instruction. So I know that it is on not just Center School's mind, but also Marsden's mind. I myself am participating in the training as an administrator this year. It's very rigorous. It is five full days in addition to the work that needs to be done ahead of it. So it's an additional, five additional days. So it is 10 days of training that many of our staff have already done. So just that one. And then the other one is House Bill 1160 that mandates that all schools require ongoing assessment of history, government, geography, civics, and economics through local assessments that are aligned with state standards and local competencies. I wanted to let you know that these are the things that are on my radar and so they become on our schools radar. But I know that our administrators are working with their social studies teams to come up with those common assessments. And we are looking at, looking at those and ensuring that they are in alignment and they uphold those policies. And I think that's enough, right? Questions for me, comments?
Yes. Was the electionary technical advisory from the New Hampshire Department of Education shared with our staff?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so they get a copy of it?
Well, what I do is I share it with my leadership team. And it's supposed to be shared then through the staff in that way. So it's, it's really, it's, it starts at the, at the leadership team and it trickles down so that they have that.
For the board, board members who don't know what that is, that is very explicit on what can be shared on emails or school-owned equipment. It's having to do with the election.
Oh, that one?
Yes, that one.
Okay, yes.
Because I've had several calls if the staff was shared with it. I've also had several calls about people talking about the election. So I wanted to bring that up and make sure that we did share with the staff.
That technical advisory?
Yes.
I will make sure if they don't have it, I will share it. It is shared in the Friday forums from Kim Houghton that all of the leaders do get. So when I get it, I forward it off to my leadership team so everybody does have it. So they should have had it. But I can highlight that one just to make sure that everyone does have it. Because you're, you're absolutely right. We would want to.
So, well Ginny, I would like for you, if you could explain a little bit more about what you're talking about for parents to understand what our staff can and cannot say about the election.
They cannot give, as far as I'm, we can't talk about anything about the election, can you?
Well, you can talk about the process of which, you know...
The process of the election, but not about candidates. You can't talk about candidates. You can't talk about how the, how the election, how you felt whether you were winning or whether you lost or about the candidates involved on, on anything owned by the school.
Does this have any impact with House Bill 1160?
No, no, that's different. Well, if...
No, I'm just gonna ask a question. I should think, as always, especially social studies teachers and history teachers, would be free to talk about social studies and history as long as they don't proselytize.
Right.
That's the key.
Right, that's the problem.
But other than that, you should be able to talk about it. It happened. It's in our country. It's part of our election process.
What people were upset about was the opinions and profit. Which we, you know, which we all tend to do if we're not in a work environment.
But the, the technical advisory that I shared with you specifically relates to the C3 frameworks, which does have in it, as you said, many of the things that are part of an election. I mean, in fact, if you recall, there were many years that we would do mock elections to give children an opportunity to vote for whether it be the mascot or something else. So children do understand that.
So we will no longer be doing mock elections?
I didn't say that.
I should think, I should think that you could.
Yeah, you can, because...
You could do mock elections, you just couldn't, if the dog and the cat...
Teachers can't say, "I'm sad that this one won."
Okay, let me rephrase that. You can't do mock elections that are, like, for instance, the students could not do a mock election of Trump versus Biden.
I think they could, but I think the teachers couldn't participate.
Oh, I don't know. I'm hearing different.
You can't, you can do Trump and Biden, but you can't say how you feel about Biden or Trump. You can say, you could vote for Trump and you can vote for Biden.
So what happens if students want to express their opinions?
I think they would have to be professional.
I think students can, teachers can't.
So students can express opinions, teachers are not allowed to...
As long as they're professional.
We're guessing. I haven't read this.
I just want to make sure we're really clear because I don't want our staff getting into trouble for something that a student may bring up and they're not allowed to say anything and then the student goes home. There's a lot of misguided things that could happen and I don't want our staff to get into trouble because they're trying to do the right thing and follow, I don't know, is this a law?
This is an advisory that came down from the New Hampshire Education Department.
But is it a law or an advisory?
Advisory.
Advisory, okay. Thank you.
It's, you know, it's, as you know, this is a slippery slope, right? And I think teachers are doing their best to educate students based on the social studies C3 frameworks.
I'm just very concerned because this says in this bill, ongoing assessment of history, government, geography, civics, and economics. So if you're, I just feel like we've got a little bit of, I think there needs to be more clarity maybe because it's very open-ended, an assessment of government, an assessment of civics.
It has to follow the C3 frameworks, which we know that the social studies teachers and our K-5 teachers have unpacked, because I was part of that C3 work. So it's really about how do you assess grade-level content based on the C3 framework, which the state did adopt, so we all have that. This, this technical advisory that Ginny refers to is a very different thing. The reason this technical advisory came out, and this was the language that it used, is because social studies is the only content area that is not part of the New Hampshire SAS, right? So that, because of that, this is their workaround, if you will. They want to make sure, though, that we're not shortchanging social studies. So there should be some local assessment to ensure that children know their geography, children know about communities, you know, children know about the three branches of government, you know, all of those C3 frameworks that is part of...
You can give general information, but you can't give specifics.
So I actually have it. We wanna, I looked it up. So number one, they gave it, it's an advisory, but they were reminding people of the law, which was passed in 2022, I believe. So, "Public school employees, while in the performance of their official duties, are prohibited from acting in any way specifically designed to influence the vote of a voter on any question or office, shall not use government property, et cetera." So essentially, it's to prevent electioneering is the idea of it. But yes, there are people who are concerned and want to make sure that teachers don't discuss personal opinions in classrooms.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we are ready for parent-partner program?
Yes.
Patrice?
Stacy.
And Stacy.
Just wanted to let you know that we started off this parent partnership project last year and it was with our school psychologist, social worker, group of people. We worked really hard. Parent connections are so, so important and we're just trying to work to make them better. So this is what we did last year and these are the steps that we're hoping to take this year. And this is Stacy Picard and Patrice Baker, school psychologist and early intervention outreach specialist.
Again, Stacy Picard, school psychologist in the district. We just wanted to give you an overview of what we did last year for the parent partnership project. That was a committee that we piloted last, that was a committee we piloted last year. And the idea behind it was to create workshops for parents that was really focused on the developmental spectrum that we have with students in this district. At that time, we had three school psychologists on that team, Michaela Kylie, who's one, myself, and former Jen Langivan. We also had Emily Fixler, the school social worker, and Patrice Baker, community liaison, as well as some parent volunteers. And so again, this is just an overview of what we learned from that and what we did.
And with, we just want to say, it really is a good investment of time and energy and resources and a smart idea to have a team thinking about this, looking at how we're doing informal ways and formal ways that we can continue to engage parents because it's directly tied to student success. So the research shows us that when parents are engaged with their child's school as real partners in learning, we see improved academic achievement, we see greater attendance, we see more positive student behaviors, pro-social behaviors, we see more engagement and work completion. So there's a long list of benefits when we really do a good job engaging with families as partners. And there's also research that shows it improves positive feelings for teachers and feeling those strong connections with families, which leads to greater job satisfaction. So there's a lot of good benefits and we really think it's important work and we're excited to, you know, with everything that we've learned and to keep on going. First started out, we really, as a team, had a lot of meetings, a lot of conversations about what we were seeing in our work with families and parents, what teachers were seeing as potential areas of interest. And then, of course, parents were invited. We had Zoom meetings with parents where they suggested ideas. It was important to us to have a range of topics that would be interesting to different parents and of children at different ages. It was also important that we promoted programs where there was easy access to the program. So for families that wouldn't have childcare in the evening, we wanted to provide childcare to make it easier for parents to come. We wanted to, you know, take something off their plates. So if we're asking them, "Come out at night, come back to school, bring your kids, and we want to learn together and talk together," we want to make it easier. So food and childcare are critical pieces of this. And then we looked around the community, like, who wants to work with us? This is a lot to pull off. It's a real team effort. You need to have a facilitator and content and materials and childcare and games and toys for the kids and food. And so we had, we, we worked hard to engage partners. We had the High School Interact Club. They came and ran what we called Play Club, which was, so we created this series, Family Night Out. So it was for parents and kids to come out together, kids in one space, parents in another space. Kids did things like feeding and Legos and face painting. And we had granite state music at one of the Play Clubs. We had the high school kids running these Play-Doh stations and crafting. We had Nick's Pizza donated pizza. We had, you know, community partners giving us food. The PTA supported us. Community, and so it was a real, it was a real, like, sort of community effort. Oh, Seacoast Public Health Network gave us some funding to pull this off. So we came up with these three different Family Night Out events. We had pretty good attendance, somewhere between eight and 12 families each time. And it was a good model and so we learned a lot. We're thinking about how we can continue with some of this, but also we're thinking sort of bigger and deeper about what does family engagement really mean? How do we build strong relationships with families in, like I said, small and informal ways and more formal ways?
Kind of going into detail, it was really important to us that we got guidance from parents as far as what they'd be interested, what they'd be interested in, as well as how to get them engaged, how, how to make sure, like Patrice mentioned, look at those barriers and see how we can help support and bring them in. So we did several things. A large focus, again, was that topic. What do we want to do for workshops? So we had parent volunteers on the committee that were very helpful. We also created a survey that looked, it had a list of very generalized developmental topics if parents would be interested, as well as a section for parents to just open-ended, what would you like to have workshops or discussions on? And a section for parent volunteers, which is where we got our volunteers from. And we had those posted, and I'll go into detail in a minute about that. So this is an example of that survey that went out to all parents in the district. The way we communicated this, again, communication was another big piece. How do we make sure we get the word out there? So we did two different ways. We made hard copies. So the survey would be one example of a hard copy we created. And we had posted, thank you to Amber Levine for showing me how to make a QR code. So we made the surveys and had QR codes to them so that, we had the hard copies in the main entrance of the school building. We also handed them out during our first parent-teacher conference time. We also had them posted at the town library. And then we did the same thing for every flyer. So every time we had a new event, they weren't, they were out hard copy, town library with the QR codes. We also sent them out electronically. Dr. Costa had them in her letter several times, including the link to the flyer and the link to the registration for parents. We had them on the school website and we had them on the SAU Facebook page. So really worked at how do we get this word out there as much as possible? And again, like Patrice had mentioned, we had a lot of help from our community, which was really important. So access, again, basic needs, in the evening, having people fed and having childcare so that parents could actually... that parents could actually take the time to really learn from the workshops and participate and not have to worry about all of the things they have to worry about in the evening. So we did, we had donations from Nick's Pizza and Community Oven. We had funding from the PTA and the Seacoast Public Health Network for some food items, but also really importantly, one thing we learned was having tangible items at the end of a workshop was really helpful. So for Patrice's session, she did the calming box, which is a regulation box. Families left with tools for the use in the calming box. When I had my mid-year presentation, I had a transition executive functioning toolbox. So they left with actual tools, timers, visual schedules, all those things with them. That was really important to generalize those skills so that it's not just telling parents, here's what you could do, but here's something to take home and now try using. So the funding from the PTA and the Seacoast Public Health Network was really helpful in that. And then, again, childcare. We had Interact Club from Winnicott High School. We had some parent volunteers that were from the committee that came to help, and we had members of this committee as well, and made it really engaging and fun for kids. So that's what we did. And so now, looking back at, you know, what did we learn from this? What were some takeaways from this? And then Patrice will go into what the next steps are. We learned that in-person learning opportunities are really helpful to help make connections with each other. And in person, you get that time to take the attention to what's happening and to learn about what's happening, and it makes it, you're in the element. It's a bit more personal.
Yeah. Yeah, go.
Yeah, I think the value, like, when we say a workshop, the value of that isn't just, we're not delivering information to parents. It's creating a space for parents to come together, and we share some things, but they also share some things. And we're all kind of having a discussion around a certain topic and offering support and ideas and strategies and building those relationships. And then some wonderful things can come out of that once you all get together. So, for example, we have two parent leaders on the Hatch Coalition who I met at one of those workshops, and they sort of signed, like, signed up to join that coalition. One of our parents is a teacher in another community, and she liked this, one of these workshops so much that she brought it to her school, and it is doing that kind of thing. So I think there's just such a value in that, bringing people together when you can, and you don't even know exactly how, you know, what the benefits could be.
Um, almost every, yeah. I guess so, yeah. So. Let me go back to one more thing on that one. So the resources, the kits, childcare was really important. One big piece thing we learned, too, was it was a lot of work. So when you're putting on in-person events that have to do with coordinating community members and childcare and feeding and presentations, it was a lot of work for these singular time workshops. And I think, I know Dr. Costa mentioned the Cook Center, and we'll talk more about this as well, but, you know, finding a hybrid, a mix of how can we have something always available to parents whenever they have time? Because we had a lot of parents that couldn't access these because things happen, right? So having, how can we find that balance between having something that is available for parents whenever they need to, and they can go back and re-watch videos or how that coaching support from someone, but also knowing that in-person works as well? It's just, it is a lot of work to do it to the level that would be beneficial for parents.
Things that we're thinking about now for our next steps, you know, we know there are so many efforts happening at each school that fall under this umbrella of family engagement. And we thought it would be helpful to really get a picture of what is already happening and really look at that in a really intentional and strategic way and identify, well, what are the gaps? What are the opportunities? Are we being redundant in some ways? Maybe there's things we need to change. So doing some of that reflection could be helpful. We also, like Dr. Costa mentioned, we want to really be intentional about connecting parents to more of the great resources that are out there. It takes time to sift through everything out there on the web. So if we could do a better job for parents of curating and finding those helpful tools and sharing them through all of our various outlets, you know, from Facebook to the website to newsletters, that's something we're thinking about, how we can do a better job with all the different platforms that we have, including some in-person events, of course. And then, you know, the PTA is such an important partner, this new Hatch Coalition. Like, we are in this family engagement work with other groups, too, the school and all of these, you know, other groups. So we want to really be collaborating and coordinating those efforts. And then continuing to engage parents as leaders, because it makes such a difference. Like, when we would have parents come to a Zoom meeting, I mean, the things they were sharing and the feedback, and it's key. So it takes time to just keep being out there and talking with people and building those relationships and building those opportunities for parents to come in and participate. But, so that's kind of what we're thinking about for this year. So anything else or questions or comments?
Sometimes we say, oh, you know, we tried this and it didn't work, and we just kind of walk away. But we were reflecting and saying, if that didn't work, we need to do something differently. So that's why we're really thinking about all these different options of how we can make it more useful and have more people involved.
I just want to throw, we've, being at the library, we've gotten really a lot of great feedback from parents about the calming boxes, about the events. You know, we've got the, if anybody hasn't been in lately, we've got basically a big sheet up, and we're asking parents to provide feedback on what, what things they are looking for from this group, but also from, from the schools, from the library for their kids in town. So it, it's really gotten a lot of engagement, and that's fantastic.
And I can't wait for the Green Center. I think the Green Center is going to be.
Cook Center, you mean?
Cook Center, I mean, not Green Center, Cook Center. As a person who 36 years ago went to work, married, and came home widowed very suddenly and left me with two boys, I had nowhere to go. There were no grief groups, there was nothing. And through my life, I've been able to help with that grief process, and I, and I love it. But it's, I think the Green Center will get a bunch of people in Hampton who are too proud to admit that they need help. And it's going to find the silent majority that's out there, and I think this is a great thing. It's going to be anonymous, it's going to be, get the help they need anytime they need it. And I think that's very important in today's world.
I have to agree with that. I think, you know, again, I think a hybrid, looking at what can we do that benefits in person, but also there's a lot of privacy to being online and accessing those websites and accessing that support and that help without having to talk in a group. And I mean, standing in front of you is intimidating. Like, so, I mean, like, being in a group of people when you're talking about something that's very personal. For a lot of people, I'd prefer to do that on my own time, you know, and have that privacy. And so I think it really is a nice blend, but the Cook Center does, it does allow for 100% privacy. So you can talk about, you know, I think parenting is tough, and there's going to be things that, you know, you're struggling with that you don't want to share in a big group, but you do want to ask, you know, how do I help my, my child after school? How do I help with these things? And I think that that hybrid will be really helpful.
I think our, our little team could be really helpful in this, in this, too, because it's such a great resource, and there'll be a launch, and people will know about it, and then it will fade away, and people will forget that we have this option to get a parent coach by text for, you know. So it's like, we, we could be the team that keeps us on the radar, keeps it in the forefront. You kind of have to be relentless about just offering it, offering it, including it, mentioning it. So that would be, that would, you know, take some effort, but certainly well worth it.
Sometimes one has to be a pain in the neck.
And so if, oh.
I was just going to say, and it is one of those things that you see it out there in the world, right? You get lots of communication from the school. You've got a second grader, you've got a third grader, everything's going great, and then all of a sudden you have a seventh grader. And it can be hard to remember that those resources are out there. So, yeah, if we just keep putting them out in front of people, then, yeah, I think that would be great.
So for anyone who did not see the presentation, the website is parentguidance.org. Parentguidance.org. It is a wonderful free resource, and as we roll this out, there will be the other things connected to it, such as the coaching, where you'll have, will show you how to get a username and a login. But get started right now, tonight, parentguidance.org.
Add one more thing, because look what Patrice had mentioned. Parent, we're not looking at replacing the Parent Partnership Project with the Cook Center, but we're looking more at how do we find a way to organize this information and have it more of a resource that parents can come use? So that's part of that hybrid process that we're looking at as far as being a resource. What else is going on that parents could benefit from that we can help put out there? And like Patrice said, remind parents, this is something that you can access, and like you said, sometimes on that Sunday night, you need that reminder from someone saying this is out here because you've got so much going on. So we'll keep on pushing that information.
Thank, thank you so much.
Yep. There will be a really big rollout. We're going to start on Friday with a kind of a planning session for how we're going to do that. The goal is to have it for parent conferences so that parents would get, you know, information that night. Every parent would get that. So, yeah. But it is, it's on our radar, and we're working through it. It's pretty exciting.
Draft calendar.
So unfortunately, it is very much a draft, and it mirrors what the calendar was last year. It's also aligned to what the Department of Ed would recommend regarding the holidays and et cetera. However, with that being said, we are still waiting to see where the SAU 21, which has to work in collaboration with anyone who goes to the Seacoast Tech Center. It all has to align, just that was one of the agreements. So this is very much a draft, but I wanted to put it on your radar, take a look at it. And then what we'll do is we'll continue to get some input from our associations and through various other stakeholders, but we're happy to take any feedback that you have. Again, very much a draft form that, thanks to Kathy Tuck, has put together with the help of the department.
Well, just at a quick glance, having the kids come back for one day at the end of Christmas vacation seems not the best. So it looks like they, they would be off from Monday through Thursday and come back on a Friday.
I noticed that, too.
Yes. Yes. So that would be just something, something to talk about.
Yep. There's, there's a lot to talk about here. You know, the other, the other piece is that, you know, even, what do we do? Do we, well, there's a lot to talk about. But we will be in alignment with Winnicott, which would be in alignment with any sending school to the Seacoast School of Technology.
I would imagine that SAU 21 would.
Yeah.
Their board's going to say the same thing. What are you having?
They're all, they're all going to, but this was just basically based on what we had this year, what the department is recommending in terms of the vacations, et cetera, et cetera. But you're absolutely right. We will look at this, and we're going to do something that makes sense.
Yep.
That doesn't make sense.
I would, I would almost think that the August, that week that they start, instead of having the four-day Labor Day weekend as they've had in the past, maybe go four days, maybe go the 29th. But again, that would have to be worked out with the union, would it?
Yeah.
It has to be, it has to be worked out with SAU, it has to be worked out with a number.
Right, SAU 21.
There's a lot.
That would just be my suggestion.
It's just to give you a sense of where those vacations are going to fall, how early we're going to start, you know, where we potentially might finish. And then, of course, adding in our release days, our conferences, and all of those other events that happened in the school year. We just didn't want it to get, this is typically the time we think about it. We just didn't want you to think we forgot about it. So we thought we'd put this in on your radar. Thank you.
We've already had updates on negotiations. We've had updates on the budget. We'll talk a little bit more about that with Mrs. Curtis. So, Grade Eight Field Trip, Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Levine. Come on down.
How are you guys? Good. So at the current moment, we reviewed all the numbers that we have for our M V students and our outreach students, and as of now, anyone who is intended to go on the trip has been covered. We are still waiting potentially for three other students. That's with money that we provided through the budget, some fundraising and some generous donations. The other issue that we were discussing was the bus issue. As of now, the numbers look good, and we are exploring options of having someone, an adult or a staff member drive this way in the case of an emergency. One person can then go with a student if someone were to go to the hospital, and then this way we don't have a full bus that needs to go and travel with them. You discussed about monies, monies that come in. All monies that come in are dedicated to the student. They're allocated, they're brought in and brought into, if they're going to the eighth grade trip, they go into the eighth grade fundraising account, similar to all the monies that we get from the calendars and everything like that. That all goes into the account. It's all noted. Every single dollar is logged. If it's allocated to the student, that money is put into it and aligned for that, to that certain student that has donated. Similar with sixth grade and the way they run their first aid field trip, their first aid accounts, because that's per student. So a student can sell X amount of first aid boxes, then that student is responsible for the money. So the more, so we are able to allocate those money per student, and then when the bill comes in, we can divvied up account. Nancy York does a really great job of handling all the money that comes in and making sure that's line by line, we're really good and accounted for. Things that we are still working on right now for the trip is a traveling nurse. There is, we discussed the issue with nurses being certified in DC. We're still looking for that issue, for that, for a solution there. We've reached out to several traveling nurse agencies regarding that, but we haven't heard anything back. And we're also looking for a, we'll be purchasing a small, a lockbox for our medication, which would be a small, small fee. So as of now, a lot of hurdles have, have been crossed, and we'll keep you posted on things. But do you guys have any questions?
Yes. You don't need any extra money, then?
I'll speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we've, as of right now, we've sent out scholarship forms, so any family that is in need of scholarship or partial scholarship, and we've gotten all of those back that we know of right now. Our eighth grade teachers have been amazing at organizing tons of fundraisers, reaching out, doing different things this year. We've got food trucks and bowling and cookie things and the calendar drive. So our calendar sales just ended on Friday, so we're still tallying up all of those. And so after all of that money gets allocated to the students who raised the money for it, then we'll go into seeing what other funds need to be raised. But we have about nine other fundraisers lined up for the rest of the year that the eighth grade teachers have put together. So they feel, we had a meeting, and they feel like they're in good shape, and they don't need to ask for any more money yet. PTA is going to help us with snacks for the bus ride. And so we feel like we're in good shape as of right now, besides our traveling nurse is the only big question we have right now and that we're still working on.
Correct. Like we said, we have, we're in a pretty good spot, and we still have the food truck coming in, we have a bowling night, and several other fundraisers that we're going to be continuing to go through, so. But as of now, anyone who is intended to go, we've worked with Emily Fixler to reach out to every single one of our M V and outreach students to see if there's any interest about them coming and if, through our scholarship forms, what support they would need there.
I have a couple of things. So I spoke with Emily Fixler. It looks like there was eight, just so you know, eight students that needed scholarships, just so you know. Do you think it would be important to address the visiting nurse and why we need a visiting nurse this year?
I think we should talk about it. I think it's part of why we wanted to bring it up, is I think it's important for parents to understand the challenges that you guys are facing in taking all of these kids out of the state, less look like he. Did you have something you wanted to add? Les, did you have something you wanted to say? You look like you were.
No, that's all right.
Okay, that's fine. So I think a short update on why, more, a more drawn-out update on why we're, why you need a nurse to go with you, and you did sort of very briefly mention, but a little more detail on why our nurses are not.
So nurses, similar to a teaching certification, is by state. And so there is not a big consortium yet, and where there is, where some, some states will accept other ones, but Washington DC is not one of those yet. So our nurses don't have any license to practice in Washington DC. So based on a judgment call, if a nurse who would typically see a student in our school, they can make a judgment call on what, whether or not to send the student to the hospital, call their parents, and so on and so forth. Then these. Then, these decisions are protected by their licensing and the insurance that would go with them. If they are practicing out of state and they make those calls, and the calls are not the appropriate calls, or things go south for a student, they could be held liable, which our nurses are, you know, kind of hesitant to do if willing at all. So that's, that is part of the hesitation. So we've reached out to the travel agency that does this. They have said that it went from about, schools were about 66% of the schools were bringing nurses, and now they're down to less than a third who are bringing nurses. So that's been, that's been a challenge for us, so we're trying to figure out a workaround on that.
So I think, so they...
So any emergencies that would happen, the nurse, if we were to have a nurse, their judgment call would not be able to, would not matter one way or another. If there was an emergency on the bus, you would have to operate as if there were no nurse in the building at all, and you'd have to call 911 and EMTs.
Your most recent overnight trip, or overnight stay, was environmental camp. And any thoughts on approximately, percentage-wise, how many of the students who attended environmental camp brought medications?
It was 38% brought medications. That was prescription medication, that wasn't including the over-the-counter medications. We can delegate an administrator to hand out medications, but then that's on Dr. Campbell and I to hand out medication to students. And then there are some medications that we cannot be delegated to because they are not, I'm not certified, I'm not a nurse, I can't give that medication. And so those are some tricky things that we're trying to deal with. This is one reason why a lot of schools have decided to cancel overnight field trips, because it's just too much of a liability right now. We reached out to several schools in the area, and none of them are doing an eighth-grade DC trip that we know of, other than one small school where they don't take a ton of students on. So we're kind of on our own trying to find a travel nurse and looking at what we can and can't do. And the nurse's license just is not, our nurse's license is not good, it's not valid in Washington DC, so. We're working on solutions, but our hands are, at this point, tied a little bit for what we can do.
So we appreciate that from you guys. I think we just wanna make sure that the public and the parents are aware of the challenges that the school is facing and trying to make sure that every eighth-grader who wants to go on this trip is able to go, whether they face medical challenges, whether they face financial challenges. They are really busting their butts to make sure that every single kid can go.
Well, and we are gonna have to look into the person who is driving, because we have to look at, there's some...
Oh, the individual who's...
Yep, there's insurance and there could be some, we have to talk about that one too, because...
But it is, I do know, for instance, at the high school, that it is very common for parents to drive on, like the, so for the choir trip and the band trip...
It would be, it would be a staff member to drive, yeah. It would be a staff member to drive down as an option. This was also kind of a way to, to, yeah, work on, work on the numbers of the bus, because if the bus's numbers go over, then that's a, that's a exorbitant...
We would rather not have to pay for a whole extra bus for one person, that'd be great. We'd appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, so. There's lots of things we still have to look at.
Correct. But we appreciate your support, we've been working on, we've been doing our best to try to make sure that anyone who wants to go on this trip has the ability to go, and we can do that safely and ensure a successful, a successful trip for our students, so. Do you guys have any further questions?
Have you had any other parents, other than the pages asked to go?
Uh, no, we have, we have, we really like to get our students and experience away from families, so we really strive to not have parents go as much as we can. Again, this, the issue would be any medical condition that would come up in a way where we could not provide the proper amount of supervision for a student to safely make it through in case of a medical emergency. So again, planning for worst-case scenario, hoping for the best, making sure that, you know, everyone is safe, staff, students, you know, everyone is insured and that we're safe. So we are looking into options. As of now, we're looking into some traveling nurse services or seeing if we can figure out a nurse that is down there. In the meantime, though, in transit from New York to, I'm sorry, New Hampshire to DC, if any emergencies were to happen on the bus, you know, emergency personnel would need to be called immediately, so.
Aren't travel nurses particularly expensive?
Um, yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm sure that they would be. So we would have to figure, you know, we're just trying to explore some new things that we didn't expect to be exploring, so.
And the bus company or travel agent doesn't have any nurses?
No, travel agency does not provide any nurses, they just simply provide the experience, you know, the method, the itinerary, the places to stay, and then they're able to provide the insurance too, so that if someone were to back out last minute in a group setting, so that they can provide it in an affordable way for students and staff, so.
And we did reach out, we did reach out to our travel, see if they had any recommendations, and they don't, because it's not something that most schools do. Most schools aren't going with, either without nurses or not going, so. But we're still exploring all of our options at this point. We're also trying to get more staff certified in CPR and first aid, just so we cover all of our bases. So we are trying, and staff is really stepping up, so we have nothing but amazing things to say about our eighth-grade staff, who are really just putting all of their efforts into this right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Curtis?
All right, so we have our budget for October in there. Everything is encumbered that we know of to date. Still working on a few things, working on some projects with Keith before he leaves, federal grants I just got set up in October, so you'll see the new grants and close out of the old grants. Food service, you'll see the expenditures, but you won't see all the revenue because they just approved the revenues today for us to get, so that should trickle down next month. You will also see a new revenue report that I enclosed. It shows what is on the MS-24R, what we guess for the revenues, and then a monthly breakdown of what we've received to date. I will be doing that monthly now, it's required by the state to have revenues on our website. I am not 100% sure if that's exactly what they want, because they gave us no clear expectations on what they wanted it to look like, if they wanted estimates, if they wanted monthlies. So we're just doing monthly, I'm doing a monthly revenue for now until we get clear information on it. I do, however, on years past, have all the audits and breakdowns of revenues for years past, but they did mention, I was talking to Christy today from the town, that they might want us to go all the way back to 2011 and do one big report, but I'm not 100%, nobody's 100% sure on that as of yet. So we're holding off, because we might be doing it together. Another thing that we'll be looking at, but for now, I will be doing an extra revenue report, I'll give it to you, it'll also be on our website. And you will see, the Estor grant is finished, and that's on our website. And you will also see coming up all of the new budgeting stuff for 2025, '26 will start to be posted now that we're slowly getting final numbers to be on that. That's really all the reports that's for the month. I do have some dates that I'd like to go over real quick. December 3rd at 6 o'clock at the Town Hall, we will present our budget.
I'm sorry, what date?
December 3rd.
3rd.
Yep, it's a Tuesday at 6:00. I will have the budget books done by the end of this week, beginning of next week, so that I can drop it off for them. I'm hoping that we will have the negotiations completed too, so I can get warrant articles completed for them at that time also. I guess it's just trying to figure out if we can meet one more time to vote, if you want, on those warrant articles prior to that meeting. So I guess we'll touch base once negotiations are done. And then on the 16th, at the Town Hall, we will have the public hearing, and that's both us and the town. And then February 5th, that is a Wednesday, we will have our first deliberative session at Hampton Academy in the auditorium at 7:00. I believe the town will hold theirs this Saturday, February 1st, here at the academy in the gymnasium, I believe, but that is not finalized yet, but I believe that's what the plan is. And then just voting on March 11th, so our calendar is pretty much set for now. If there, we have some snow dates, but I will have, I'll get this posted up on our website too, so that we have that. Do we have questions on any of that stuff before we move on to the draft? Andrea, do you have questions? I saw your face.
Andrea, did you have a...
Do you have any questions?
She said you had a face.
No, are you sure? Okay. So then the only other thing is that we could vote on warrant article 1, which is the operating budget, and warrant article 4, which is the school building maintenance.
I would move, I would move article 1, and I would note that the amount that we are asking for is $403,916 less than the default, unless my math is wrong.
$109... It's more.
It's more.
More.
It was more.
Do you have it backwards? Because I see what you're seeing.
Okay, then it's, then it is listed.
Oh, do I have it?
It's backwards, it's backwards in here.
You do, that's the problem.
That's fine, so. That would be great, but not...
Yes.
Okay, well, I didn't, but it's listed backwards, right?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay, so if we reverse those numbers...
Even still.
If we reverse those numbers...
Yes, so $29,766,431 would be proposed budget.
Okay.
If that does not get approved, it would go to our default budget.
So our budget then is $403,916 more than the default.
So it's one point, yeah, four or five.
So that's what I would move, and you would make those corrections in warrant article 1.
Yes, my draft article, yes.
Second.
Do I have a second? Questions? No? All in favor?
That is a 3.2 raise.
Yes, total, yes. Okay, and number four, which is the, our continuing $300,000, which I would like to point out that we have not increased in quite some time. Anyone like to move the $300,000? That would, if anyone, for the public, that does include $75,000 in LED lighting upgrades at Marston, windows and LED lighting upgrades at center.
I'll move that $300,000.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All right, so we will come back together for 2, 3, and 5, so our two contracts and the Sacred Heart.
And article 1 also includes a 5% raise for all non-contractual employees.
Correct, correct, yes.
Well, that public should know that as well.
Yeah, that's fair.
Mariah, quick question. Has article 5 been brought forward?
Yes, no, it's, I just have the full amount, I have not seen the signed petitions yet, so I figured we should hold that until I see that.
Curious.
Yeah, but that amount was given to us, so that would be the amount. I just would prefer to hold until we see the...
The signatures.
The signatures, yeah.
That's fine. Okay, update on facilities managers and custodians.
So there were eight of us on the committee, and we held first and second interviews, and at the end, we reached consensus that the person we are offering the position to, and I met with him today, with Mariah, is Tim Harrington, and we're very excited about this. He is actually a, currently a facilities director in Stratum, so he's got the direct experience, and he's also a Hampton resident. So he, we're very excited that we have such a, we had a very strong applicant pool, but I think that his direct experience with facilities is going to be a bonus for all of us, where he's going to start when we get back from the winter break. I also had the opportunity to speak with his references, particularly building principal and former boss, who couldn't say enough nice things about him. And so we're really excited about it, and I think he's, he's very excited about this opportunity. And in the meantime, his present employer will be, you know, looking for somebody, but I know that Ms. Lassard has so graciously, also is going to have Tim come a few days in November, December, and do some walkthroughs and introductions, and start to get him acclimated. And, you know, we just can't say enough about the work that our facilities manager, Keith Lassard, has done for the past 24 years. And we're all very hopeful that we have someone coming in who is going to, I think, work really hard for us and try to do just what we need for our district. So I think the committee, and Andrea, you were on the committee, if you want to say anything further.
I think we did have some strong candidates, and it was a tough decision, but I think we made the right decision, and I think Tim will do a great job.
Yep, and we are sending out letters, obviously, to all of those people who applied, and we appreciate so many people that did put forward their names, but it was really going with the most qualified person to do, to do the job for our, for our community. Yeah.
Are you ready to nominate tonight or not?
It's actually an appointment, so we don't need to nominate, but I do like to always tell you and make sure that, you know, everybody is notified under just being transparent and to be communicative, yep.
What about custodians?
So at this time, we are, Mariah and I had the opportunity to interview a custodian a week ago, Friday, and we are filling the last open position. To our knowledge, there isn't any, not to say there won't be, but we are filling a position, one of the last positions that was open, and so we're excited about that, because we are fully staffed. With that being said, we're mindful of that, you know, things can turn on a dime, and so we're just keeping, we're keeping our eye out, near out, and making sure that we have the support and the staff that Tim will need to do the work that's required. So right now, we're okay. Yep, and again, this is somebody also that's in our community that was looking for a position in their community, so again, it was... It was. Yes, in your packet, there are three letters. November 1st is the day that we do ask our professional staff to let us know, and we also have somebody who we have valued tremendously, who has also given their notification as well. So I'll do them in the order in which you have them, and the first one would be from Heather Cronin, who was a speech-language pathologist who has been here a number of years, who, you have her letter, I don't know if you want to read it or what you want to do.
I move that we accept Heather Cronin's resignation retirement notice with regret, but we wish her luck.
Yeah, I second that.
I second that.
And your next letter is someone who, again, has been here 26 years and has started her career at Center School as a Title I tutor, and then moved over, and then moved into the teaching position from 2000 to 2014, and then moved over to Marston, and I had the, the great fortune of working with her during her time, and then has done a lot of work, is somebody who is very involved and somebody who works hard every single day on behalf of the staff and the students, and is a negotiator for our professional contract, and somebody who is a voice for many of our staff, and that would be Amy Murphy, our fifth-grade teacher.
I'll make a motion to accept Amy's retirement letter with regret.
With a lot of regret.
A lot of regret. We'll miss her.
She's done a lot of work for our kids.
I'll second that. Favor?
And last, but certainly not least, somebody who's been at SAU 90 since.
Beginning.
Yeah, since the beginning, somebody who I have leaned on in the last five years, who, who knows policy, who knows how to run an SAU office, who has done an incredible job with many of the changes, including fingerprinting and all of the other things that have come in the last five years, and, but is choosing to retire. I, I wish her nothing but the best, but again, big shoes to fill, and that would be Kathy Tuck, my administrative assistant.
As a member of the board that hired her, I would also like to move to accept her as her retirement and wish her the best of luck, and no, she will be missed.
She will, but we have plans for her, so.
I heard.
There could be some things that, some projects that we've kept.
Sure.
That we might be able to really use her, and I'm hoping we get to see her on occasion, and I'm sure.
Because she has tons of knowledge that, that everyone doesn't have.
Institutional knowledge is invaluable.
Yep.
She and Nathan and Kathleen were the team that put it together.
Yep, yep, and if all works out well, we'll be able to do some kind of a transition, similar, you know, something like, similar, like we're doing in the other case, so we would, we would do that, so.
I think we all are very sad about it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you need to. It's not professional staff, so, but just, you can if you want to, but.
I think it might be nice.
Okay, I'm okay with that, so Jenny moved it.
You made a motion, so I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Just a clarification, were you with regret?
Yes, she said with, yes, I think, extremely.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yep.
I just voted.
No, no problem.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, I know it's, yeah, appreciate it.
Policies.
Oh, my goodness.
So, we've got, there was a set that we had last month as first reads, which was ACF, ADB, ADC, and JICD, and those will be second reads, so.
I would move all of those.
All right, do I have a second?
Unless somebody wants to pull any one of them.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on those? So, those would have been in your packet last month.
Yeah.
All in favor? Rest, which is a combination of what's in your packet, and we did also get a little bit of an extra packet at the budget meeting.
Yes.
And so, those are first reads.
Yes.
Let us know. Most of those are being added or changed due to updated laws.
Yep. They are, they are a lot of works. JKAA took Kathy a good part of a day just to format them and put them in a, put them in our policy. They do require a lot of work, but they are necessary and required by law.
I have a question on JKAA. Does this require that we have staff that are trained in, and do we have staff that are trained?
We do, in fact, Miles Planet, our BCBA, is safety care certified, so he will do the training for all of our registered behaved technicians, our RBTs. So, yes, we do, and yes, we have those that are trained, and whenever there is a situation, what would happen is we would call for safety care, and it would have to be somebody who does have the training and is certified that does do this.
It's going to probably have to be one in each building.
Well.
I was trained in this when I worked in the building, and we did it with a whole group, most of the paras who work with students who may require, we, we, their goal is to never have to use it.
Yep.
It's just a tool. No, I understand that, I just.
He trains a lot of people all at once.
Yep. Then, there are, there are, there's a team in every building that is trained, just because you have to. In fact, we like to have teams. It's never usually one person, but there's at least two.
Is this a certificate?
It is.
Program training?
It is safety care training, yes.
Okay, yeah, it is.
And it's, it's extensive, it's two days.
I felt more confident after I learned all of it.
We will revisit those next month. Folks, we're getting down to the end. Besides, so let's take a look at, we have draft meeting minutes from October 8. Does anybody have any changes?
There's a typo on first page, down at the bottom, 4.4 curriculum. Andrea, his name is spelled wrong.
I looked at it and couldn't figure out what looked wrong.
It's mentioned.
And it was the H.
And it's mentioned 10 more times in the report, and they're all right.
That's funny, okay.
Spell check, Miss.
And I didn't really care, but that's okay. We can fix it for you.
No big deal.
All right. Actually, if we're going to do, if we're going to do typos, page 7 of 7, review under policy reviews spelled wrong. With those changes, do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
I'll second.
Oh, page 7, oh, I'm sorry, they all say 7 of 7.
That's right.
It is page 81.
I just want to make sure that we fix it.
Yep, all in favor?
Yep.
We have minutes from the non-public session. I have a motion to accept those, sorry, the non-public session of October 8.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Was that issue one or all of them?
Oh, sorry, that was issue one. That's because I didn't notice that we had a second one. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept issue two.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Do we have anyone here for the continuation of public comment on agenda items?
Can I give a thank you to Danielle Albright, Dani Albright, who is doing our minutes for us and is really doing an excellent job?
That's great.
Just a big shout out to Dani, appreciate that.
Awesome. Do we have any need for non-public? Is this a record?
Might be.
I do not think in four years that we have had a meeting that did not, we did not go into non-public.
That's gratitude, right?
That is amazing.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All, all in favor? Hey!